Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM on March the 6th. The Belle Air Beach City Council meeting will now come to an end. We're going to begin this meeting with a predication. All the Father and children of the citizens, please. This month, I will be doing the predication. Please join me in prayer. Our Lord in heaven, we thank you for blessing us with this beautiful city that we are able to call our own. We also thank you for blessing our city with the wonderful residents that live within, talented leaders who serve us, would give their time and energy to the city of Belle Air Beach. This evening, Lord, we pray for a productive council meeting that will lead to positive outcomes, not only for our community, but also for those who serve within. For this, in your name we pray. Amen. Amen. Please join me in the predication. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. James, would you please help?
Captain Elizabeth Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Linda Livingston.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Sable.
Here.
Vice Mayor Julie Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Present.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Councilmember Leslie Otero was unable to attend.
Thank you, babe. Our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Motion. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Sable. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Now we move to citizens' comments. Any citizen who would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We ask that you leave your comments to no more than three minutes. Any council members who would like to respond to the citizens' comments, please hold your responses until we reach council comments at the end of the meeting. Before I call on anyone in the audience, I already have one card from Miss Vicki Flyer from 111 14th Street. Please step up to the podium. And it's my understanding that Debbie Mall has yielded her three minutes also.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gaddis, councilmen and women. Thank you for serving our community. My name is Vicki Flyer, and my husband, Russ, our marine son, Peter, and I live on 14th Street. We moved here just one year ago and mostly love our community. I'm here today to address a topic from the February 25th email where Councilman Lloyd Roberts is looking for solutions to traffic on the Gulf and Causeway two-way turn. His proposed idea is to remove the two lanes turning left onto the causeway, restore the blinking yellow light, use the two right lanes to proceed straight. The left outer lane will be the only turn lane onto the causeway, remove the existing island and palm tree, but the crosswalk would remain. The existing center merge will feed the left-hand turn lane supposedly, ensuring that north-south traffic is not affected. With the proposed changes, 170 or more driving residents from the 85 houses on 12th, 13th, 14th, and 15th streets will be affected. After living here for a year, I see these traffic patterns because I drive in and around them multiple times a day, and I use the crosswalk on a regular basis. The amount of traffic turning left to the causeway always far outweighs the traffic going straight. What would be the purpose of creating two lanes to go straight toward Indian Rocks when this is not the traffic problem and we're just quickly into one lane anyway? As I dissect this proposal, I will agree that a blinking yellow light turning left is long overdue. The rest I am completely in disagreement with. As a resident of that median area, I can attest that there is always a backup of traffic turning left on the causeway during the heavier traffic times. But cars are able to condense into the two turn lanes and then make the turn. Having a flashing yellow light will absolutely allow them to keep moving. Currently, to turn left, I have to sneak out into traffic and wait in the center lane until there is an opening or the traffic clears up. With the proposed changes, that center lane will not be available to any of us on those streets for this purpose, making it very difficult to turn left. Because of the fact that there is still constant traffic coming from the south, whether it be bridge traffic or Indian Rocks traffic, cars that are coming from either direction rarely slow down for cars pulling out. It would be much more difficult to get into that turn lane because no one is going to let us cut in. It will be even more difficult to cross through that single long lane of cars to get to the far lane to cross toward Indian Rocks. Removing the island and the beautiful palm tree would definitely take away a part of the charm of Belle Air Beach and would absolutely create a greater problem with pedestrian crossing. Currently, it is still not safe to cross toward the beach because cars in general do not pay attention, and the flashing yellow lights aren't bright enough to stop the cars, as evidenced by cars still running through flashing lights when we cross. By removing the island and changing two lanes to three lanes of traffic will only make crossing a greater safety issue. We can all predict that the natural response for drivers to speed up in order to make that light since there's only one lane, and they won't be paying attention to light flashing lights for the pedestrian crossing. After talking with many neighbors within the community, no one can understand why this change would be made. Moving forward with this proposal would be a mistake and a complete disservice to the surrounding residents and will highly restrict our ability to get out of our streets. The only part I support is the left turn arrow to a flashing yellow. As I close, I would strongly encourage this council to maintain a focus on our community to make improvements that centers on the needs and conveniences for us, the taxpaying residents of Belle Air Beach, and to be careful of changing or fixing things to accommodate the traffic increases from visitors and tourists. As long as we are a thoroughfare for tourists, we will always have heavy traffic, which can never be fixed with these proposed changes. It will only cripple a portion of our own community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mall. Yes. Please come up and give us your name and your address.
My name is Kathleen Pleiser, and I live on 21st Street, Number 6. Tonight, I wish to engage the City Council on two items in consurgement. Both deal with disability accommodation. I would like the city to relook the bridge connection from Gulf Boulevard to the beach just north of the Belle Air Beach Motel. I brought this up to a council member last year and it heard nothing. Perhaps together, if you can come up with a plan that doesn't exclude the handicapped living close by, we're using this path to the beach. This relatively new bridge structure does not meet performance of the disabled residents near its location. Last year, at the end of the summer, my son, who handicapped grandson, took the bridge to the beach. My grandson rides in a Kansas wagon as he is unable to walk and his motor steals on his right side. My son and grandson reached the edge of the bridge where it meets the beach, and because of the poor design of the bridge, the wagon tipped over and my grandson and son were tossed to the ground. My son fell trying to stop the wagon from overturning. Soon after, my son tried it again, arching the beach at a different angle, and once again, the wagon was tossed and my handicapped grandson was tossed with his dad into the beach. My grandson is now afraid to get to the beach if he misses path. I walked the bridge to see what the problem was, and as a disabled veteran, I found it challenging to walk up the bridge and in, especially with its standing. The handrail was too wide to get a grip, and I was afraid I was going to miss the right. The second disability accommodation that I would like to bring to your attention is that my grandson is nearing to walk with a swollen walker and simply have no sidewalks he walks in the street. I would like to see if the city can put up traffic signs for many drivers to be aware of this sworn disabled child on 21st Street.
Thank you, Ms. Pleiser. Yes, John Hanson.
John Hanson, 22nd Street. I'd like to speak to Councilman Sable's suggestion or thoughts on this traffic issue. For historical purposes, when we moved here in 2015, there was only one single left-turn lane with a flashing yellow light. Being as how I've been involved in safety in my military career, and I look at what we have there, proximity of that crosswalk to this traffic light did not make sense only because there's a parking lot over there. Councilmen suggested that the island go away and leave crosswalk. You're still, regardless, going to have traffic jammed up, no matter how many left-turn lanes you have. And again, previous administrations, for historical purposes, have attempted to work with the city of Clearwater Beach to no avail. We are, because of their problem and that rivalry, we're the default to get to the beaches. I don't know what the solution is, but if I were in a position to help make decisions, I'd take the crosswalk and the median out altogether. Traffic being what it is, I understand. It can be backed up all the way to 22nd Street. Unfortunately, we've learned in the time we've been here, we get our stuff done Monday through Friday, and limit any vehicular movement on the weekends only because you can't get in or get up at the Gulf Boulevard. And even when my wife and I walk to the beach over there by the motel, it's next to impossible for traffic to yield three lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Yes, or Ms. Mall?
Roger Mall, 115 Causeway Boulevard, across the street. I just learned about this island proposal to manage it slightly, like the previous gentleman to give a little historic perspective. Originally, when I came here, it was over 20 years ago that we moved into the community. And at that time, basically, anybody who tried to cross Gulf Boulevard was a target because the same traffic that you see now was there without any kind of controls. And especially since this first of each access is so close to the turn, people take that turn and then just fire it. And so, when they put in the two islands, that basically helps solve that problem because of the flashing lights. Now, with the flashing lights, I think they'd be more effective if we changed the color just because every construction truck in the area has a hundred lights. But for you guys, I can see we're frustrated with the people who live farther north trying to get that light. Whoever it was when they made the double turn lanes that came up with the idea that it would be a left turn only, that was, I think, a poor decision because the poor people that are north of Causeway, you have to wait forever because you can't turn when there's no traffic coming the other way. So doing the flashing light would make a huge difference, and I see that as really the only remedy for the people turning left because if you take out those islands, let it happen before they have the islands in, because not only were they rushing and not paying attention to our citizens, but it backed all the way up to, even during spring break weekends, it almost went all the way to Clearwater. So that would affect everybody getting out onto Gulf Boulevard, and we're basically trapped inside our community because people won't ascend in order to get out to Gulf Boulevard. So I would suggest that you rethink taking out those islands just because I remember the headaches we had before we put them in and the down gradient of safety that was there by not having those islands. So I would suggest that we keep the islands and maybe even look on further down so that the people that are at the north side of the city can get out and the people trying to get to the water beach, make it so that we can't get by. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Mall. Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Tammy Lavenda, 97, Harper Tribe. I'm here tonight just to give a couple of save the dates for the new Belle Air Beach Community Foundation, our new nonprofit that we started in November. A quick save the date for our spring fundraiser, the Earth Day Sunset Social, on April 22nd from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. You can see our website for more details, bellerbeachcommunityfoundation.org. And we'd just like to thank in advance our sponsors. We now have Duke Energy, Waste Management, and Rita Swope from Century 21 as our sponsors. We have many in-kind sponsors that have donated great gifts for our raffle. And I'd like to thank in advance the volunteers that we have. We do need a couple more. So if you're interested in volunteering for just maybe an hour at the event, please reach out to one of us, either Wendy Gaddis, Nicole, or myself. The next save the date is April 15th, which is our next bridge cleanup. We've adopted the bridge to keep Pinellas beautiful, so if you're interested in that, it's from 9:00 till 11:00. I'd like to say a quick thank you to everyone who donated to our local animals in need in the month of February. They greatly appreciated it, and so did we. And then I'm going to switch gears real quick and put my Park and Record hat on and say, if you like the yoga classes that we're currently doing on Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday, a Tuesday class was just added in the building. And then, if you've seen that, we have the embedded Belle Air Beach fanning packs. We only have three left, and we're probably not getting any more. So if you're interested in one of those, please make sure that you stop by City Hall. And we did get new embedded hand towels, and they were outside. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lavenda. Anyone else?
Randy Love, 13th Street. I think the idea about removing the palm trees and the island between 12th and 13th is really a terrible idea. There's nonstop traffic going northbound to Clearwater. I live on 13th, and we can't get out. It's so bad for people on 12th that they loop around and kind of on 13th just to give them a little bit better of a shot. Okay? I sent an email last week extensively detailing a lot of issues with this plan. I don't know who saw the email or the video. I took a video out on the street of all the traffic. I don't know if anybody saw that. I saw the video either. I can't ask here if you have a lot of questions. Number of months ago, I came here asking about three more benches at the 12th Street access. Like, we used to have six, now they're down to three. They're nicer now, but they're down to three. And cleaning up the real high weave that were blocking one of the southmost bench and getting a bike rack so the bikers don't chain their bikes to the benches that we have so at least we could sit there. Kyle, who did a great job trimming those weeds, getting those weeds trimmed up, so I thank you, I appreciate that. I have no idea on status of getting more benches or a bike rack, and I can't ask now. I'll reiterate again that this policy of not taking any questions from the public is, I think, is really messed up. You can say, why don't you email your questions in? I did last week regarding my issues, my concerns about this causeway and taking that island down. No one responded, but I have no idea where your heads would be. If anybody even saw it or they cared. Okay? I can't always make it here during the day to meet with my table or his open office hours, so I get no answers. I understand your concerns about things getting out of hand like they did maybe in the past, but there's better ways to deal with things than refusing to answer questions from the constituents, the public that you're here to serve. I, like I said, Belle Air Beach has implemented the Wawa management technique. Okay, I go to Wawa all the time. I used to go with my wife for breakfast and lunch, and we have tables. We could sit out there and enjoy our lunch and breakfast and whatever. Wawa had a real big issue on the Surrey Avenue with all the homeless, homeless coming from all over the place, picking up those tables. So the Wawa management decided they get rid of two-thirds of the tables. That way, the homeless won't have anywhere to sit. Okay? So I think there's other ways to deal with unruly people or people that are out of line or asking crazy questions or doing something, but just to say that you're not taking any questions, where's the public to go to get answers to these questions other than trying to squeeze in a date with Mike? If they were sending in an email, they don't know where you're going to get an answer. Thank you, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes?
Good evening, Jennifer Pope, 523 Belle Isle. I actually, for the first time, just learned I can't ask questions, so I do not have anything prepared. But what I wanted to talk about is the ordinance that you are reading for the Sunday Today on Sunday. I wanted to get a better understanding of why we have arbitrarily chosen plots and lands.
I'm sorry. That is one of our agenda items, and I'm going to let you continue, but normally, if there's an agenda item, we give you the opportunity to speak while we're discussing.
Oh, okay.
So you can continue now, or you can continue carrying that agenda item. It may serve you better if you waited.
Absolutely, I definitely waited. My understanding is that we were just going to read the title of it and vote, so if we're going to actually have discussion on it, I'd be happy to wait.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pope. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Campbell, which is 1021 Palm Drive, right over here on the causeway. As far as removing the island, I just wanted to bring up some more of the safety issues with that. That is my way of getting over to the beach because I live right here on the causeway. So what I have found, if that walk is taken away, is that when I go across the street and I'm at the light and I go to walk across the street there, all the people that are turning right there that have a right turn on red, they're not paying any attention to the crosswalk. They're not paying any attention to that little light that says, "I'm able to walk." They're looking to the left to see if there's any cars coming. I've almost got hit probably two, three times after the light had changed, walking out to cross the street at that light. I'm talking the traffic light. So if we remove the crosswalk, it's, you know, that's crazy. So removing the crosswalk, I think, should not even be on the agenda. Removing the island also, I believe, is a bad idea because the island actually triggers people to see that there is a crosswalk. And I almost got hit a few times even walking across the island with the lights flashing. You know, I totally will sit and wait and make sure that the car is slowing down because the cars, you know, they tend to not even slow down unless somebody's standing in the middle of the road. So just wanted to make that safety issue prominent.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Nope? All right. Citizen comments are closed. All right, now we are on to item number three. This is a presentation of the Penellas County Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Yes, sir. Please come on up and introduce yourself.
I'm the mayor and council member. My name is Dennis Simpson. I'm in Penellas County Utilities Engineering Division, and I'm in charge of the horizontal assets. And the lining projects are on my jurisdiction. I have here Joe Boggs. He's with the Board's Inspection. He's in charge of inspection. And I also have an inliner contractor, and his name is John Sutherland. Here in place, lining contract, gravity sewer is a transverse technology, and it's basically for rehabilitating deteriorating gravity sewers. And that is done by the lining. And what they do is basically they take a lining and put into the pipe and by air, steam, and ultraviolet light, they expand the lining and therefore stop the infiltration of water into the sewer. Presently, we have a contract which is in construction here in Belle Air Beach, and from what I understand, there are some issues, and I'm here to basically respond to those issues.
Sure. Would you like to review the issues, the complaints that our city manager, Riefler, would you like to explain what the issues are?
Sure. Yes, Mayor. I welcomed Penellas County Utilities because they got underway with the project he's referring to, which is the sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Who's the contractors, the liner solution? And we did not have any knowledge of this project, which is, you know, going to be a couple of months long spanning the city. When I first found out about it, I didn't know. I heard about it happening on 5th Street, and I was trying to contact the county to find out if they'd expand on the project. Turns out, it was pretty much the whole city. So since then, I've been in contact with the county, and they provided continuing information to me, which has been helpful. I guess at some point, we just kind of dropped the ball on notifying the city that this was coming up. And I just got covered with the county, how important it is for us to know because the citizens will call us first if they know what's going on. So I then just being in contact with the county asset, they could come up to us being and just kind of go over the project and address any concerns that the citizens might have due to the sculptor project.
And I guess the biggest concern was why weren't we notified? And I understand that door tags went out, it was the day before the project, and I think many people were caught off guard. And there were also some overloads where they just were not aware of the project completely, burned it home, and came home to a big mess.
Yes. Yes. We normally would notify, but we have decided on large projects like this because I think we're doing about 60 to 70% of the gravity sewers in Belle Air Beach. So for a project this size, I think we're going to notify the city to let them know that we're coming. Normally, what happens is that the project gets bid, it gets awarded, and then when the constructions start, they would do cleaning. At that time, we wouldn't have notified the residents. But four days to the lining because with the lining, they're basically going to be blocking this lateral flows into the line. And that's usually for a segment, say 400 feet, it only takes about a day of work. So they notify 24 hours before by putting door hangers on the residents to let them know that they want to be doing the lining in that segment, and as they progress, they'll do more door hangers.
Have you installed any lines yet in Belle Air Beach, or are you only doing testing and?
I don't know.
Yes, sir. As right now.
I'm sorry, sir, for the record, please state your name.
Joe Boggs, Penellas County Construction Administration. So at this point so far, we have roughly about 80 lines left to line. We started out with 132, I believe. So we still have 80 more to go. We're trying. I understand that Councilwoman was affected by it. I apologize about that. That is from cleaning the line. Like Dennis was saying, when we line, that's when the notices go out because your sewer is actually being backed up. So the more water you use, the more chance this is going to come through your house. We've also learned that if you give out a notice a week ahead of time, people forget about it. 72 hours, people forget about it. So normally, what they do is on Friday, they put out Monday's notices. Monday, they'll do Tuesday, Wednesday notices. About 48 hours is what they've been doing. And then, you know, so Wednesday, Tuesday, they'll do Thursday, Friday notices. And then again, like on Thursday, they'll go back and do Friday's notices again because it was more than 48 hours. We try to keep it around 48 hours. I don't like 24 because that is a short notice. And some people are like, oh, I have the plans tomorrow, my son's birthday party. They don't work on the weekend, but you never know who's doing what during the week, especially if something goes wrong. It could be a very late night.
Thank you. Just curious, what's the maximum homes that are, that you've encountered that would be impacted during one of these cleanings or lines?
It's really hard to say. Depending on how many homes, you know, how big your lots are, you know, you might only have, well, some of the runs here that we've done, the side street right over here, which five lateral is on it. So, you know, that's a full-on shot.
I'm just curious about what's the time span for that one, that one line that you did?
This, the one right next door right here, what is it named with the street here? Right on the other side, Park Line?
Cedar.
Cedar? That day there, they was done by three o'clock. They started, they started televised at seven a.m., and they were completely done and gone by three o'clock.
Okay, so you came into my street, Twenty-Second Street, and we didn't know if you were in the fleet, and it looked like you were in one hole over here for a while?
That was probably the cleaning crew.
Okay. And then, we really just didn't know. We had no clue as to what was going on, other than, hey, don't run your water at the seven a.m., something like that. I think that's what the notice said. But we really just had no information, and we were a little afraid that we'd come home to what my speaker came home to. So I think, yes, especially if it's a, if it's a hospital, it might not be a bad idea just to bang on the door and just say, hey, we're starting, or something like that, because I'm sure there's some people that won't even know that tag's on their door.
And that's one thing that we run across, too. The gentleman that's here now, his name is Johnny, if anybody, if you see him out, he's the foreman of an inliner. He's great. And that, the inliner goes in, he will go to each house and say, can I get your phone number so I can put you on a group text and let you know, hey, you're free to use yours, you're free to use yours, you're free to use yours. You know, he does, he does do that. If we're only on a street that's, you know, like over here, Cedar's only got five, he'll just come up on the door and say, you're free. Hey, you know, but when you, a lot of times, they try to do double shots, meaning eight hundred feet. So you might have ten, fifteen services all together. That's when he'll do a group chat with the neighborhood. And then, you know, he's on site, walking back and forth, the guys are on site, my inspector's on site. If you guys ever see, you know, somebody on the street, look for Penous County truck. You know, his name is Trevor Love, he'll be more than happy to answer anything. Give him Kyle, Kyle has my contact information. My phone's always on, I always answer emails, so if anybody's got any questions, just reach out to me. I'll have him answer the call.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, question.
I just want to add a couple of things, and that is, I mean, I think I voiced my concerns with you over the phone, but we, you know, the day I came home, we were just cleaning pipes on my street. Had no idea this was happening, and there was no notices, no information provided. Came home to an absolute mess because the clean just blew through my toilets. I'm sure, and I was not the only person on the street, I'm sure probably several other residents have dealt with the same issue. I called Penous County Utilities, and was told that you guys were not providing any service out there, there was no construction going on, there was nothing being done. That caused, and what they told me to do was talk to risk management. That was their only answer. They would not even research the top. They, I made them check twice with their service technicians to see if they were doing anything out there, insisted nothing was being done. That concerned me. I had called Kyle, because at this point now, it's after five, on his cell phone, sure he's probably home, he had no idea what was going on. I know you own those utility lines, but they run through our city. Any work being done in our city needs to go through our senior manager, because he's going to get the first one called.
Yes, and...
And all of us will get the call, too. And there was no communication with anyone. That, so that's got to be addressed moving forward. Then, as we move forward in this project, you must know today where you're going to be tomorrow. It would be nice to be able to, for happy to send an email at least to our residents to know, hey, we're working on, you know, whatever streets, these three streets over the next three days, expect to see a door hanger or something, so that we're aware of what's happening. Because on my street, I guess, we've only been, our line's been cleaned, there's not, have not been lines. So I know kind of how that's been causing my house, but I'm really not happy with the outcome of what happened at my house.
No, I didn't, like I said, I apologize about that. I was not aware of that day that the cleaning crew was even in the city. I was not informed of that.
Which then creates the other question is, how safe are our utilities? If anyone can come into our city and tap into our lines, how safe is that as a resident? Not very safe. Causes concern me.
Well, yes, it does. But like I said, I was not aware of the cleaning crew even being in Villar Labs. My understanding, maybe it was in Fargo, you know, so I, that's not my jurisdiction, that's nothing else I can do. As far as getting, the problem with giving you guys the schedule, it's a schedule. It says, okay, we might be... For instance, today, I can't remember which street, but the guy who was on today, because we had two lining crews here today, one has an offset joint in the pipe, it wasn't able to work. So I, so I don't know when, you know, if I can tell you that it was your street today, and now all of a sudden, you come home thinking, oh, gosh, I'm done with it, I wore my bathroom, it's done. Well, nothing happened, so we're going to come back.
But your, the point was, I said, maybe you had to send an email, we projected doing these streets, watch for door hangers. You're not going to hang a door hanger unless you're doing work, right?
No, the door hanger was up. When they went and pre-videod this morning, they found the pipe hooked, so we could not put a liner in there. So, you know, and that's, and sometimes, you know, when the truck comes, the liner that you were supposed to do today might be on the very bottom. Those guys aren't going to dig through two thousand feet of liner to get that one off.
I just, I'm a contractor. I find it incredible that your subcontractor can't do a better job of communicating with our residents. And I'll just say, maybe you're there in line and communicate that.
No problem.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
You're just, I understand correctly, you're just doing main sewer line, you're not doing the branches of our house, is great. So how would that backup, I mean, of course, work for backup, but when you're cleaning, and you're using like a sandblaster tool?
It's on, it's a jet nozzle on the other hose.
Yes.
And if the, if your Y is on backwards, when they pull back, it will push water up. You know, they will. If the pressure's too high, it'll do the same thing. If you're descaling with some of these older pipes, you know, they do have buildup on them, they do need to be descaled before you put a liner. Because if not, you're just, you're shrinking the pipe down even smaller. So sometimes you do have to use high pressure. And, you know, and it does, it happens, you know, it's, I don't like when it happens, but it's a flat tire, it's like a flat tire.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the pressure you're using is probably under a hundred and sixty P S I's, and your branch tailpipe coming off the house, it's got to be at least fifteen to twenty-five feet. So that, I can't see how it's going to go in backwards.
John, what do they normally run, pressure?
Six hundred.
Six hundred?
Yeah.
And if it's a straight, you know, pretty flat rod, it's going to blow it up there.
Councilmember Baker, I was home whenever they, whatever, whatever it was they did of our lot, and they made, they made the toilets bubble, we heard things in the sink, it varied and served.
I believe, I believe they did our street, or did each street, did you complete each street, Dan?
Yes, I believe each street has been lined.
I don't believe, I think you did it in Marles, Joe. The crew was very professional out there. They started three minutes before seven, which is a loud.
I'll take your advice on that.
No, I'm just saying, you guys were very professional. You tied up our street, you didn't even tie up a street, you blocked at the street, and we can only say that outside is real. You guys are very professional, had the cones out and everything like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I'd like to thank you gentlemen for coming out and answering some questions and trying to clear things up.
No problem.
We look forward to a much broader outcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. All right, I'm Thor. I have a presentation from Penous County Sheriff's Office, and for the law enforcement monthly report.
Good evening. Hello. I am Sergeant Boy Swish with Penous County Sheriff's Office, and tonight, I'm presenting the activity for January of 2023. Under the UCR property and prison crimes, we had a report, there were zero across the board, so there was no criminal activity in the city that month. However, there were five people arrested, and that resulted off the traffic activity, so traffic stops, DUIs, warrant arrests, and some drug activity. Moving forward for deputy activity, there were a total of six hundred and eighty-three events within the city, leading then, as usual, were the direct controls and then traffic enforcement. There were no crashes in the city, so I think that should make everybody happy hearing that. And then lastly, there were a combination of one hundred and seventy-four citations and warnings issued for the month, and that is all I have.
Counselor? Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'd just not hear, Mr. Cooper, would you like to give us a summary on the code enforcement report?
Yes, sir, I agree. So we did, this is our second time, we've gone around with this new format of code enforcement report. Steve's been working with a template that we gathered, and this one, we had fifty-one. This seems to be in our report, some of them are closed out, some are still ongoing. Again, I did some mind charts just to show the categories of the violations that are being covered. You know, so the distribution of the city streets. Our outstanding code violations, we've had some developments. The dangerous structure, we had a hearing for the order of adjustments, you know, for March ninth, after the city attorneys been in contact with the attorney representing the resident. It was advised that we postpone to attempt to make a reasonable compensation for the structure, so it's an attempt to work forward to try to come to some kind of, something that's acceptable to the city, that's put it within the law, and we'll give you a follow-up where that goes. We had a hearing since the last meeting on February twenty-third for the, our resident that had some roving, hard areas, some overgrowth, so that was issued an order of fine, and some works that are done on that property, and it's not quite done yet, I'm meeting with someone tomorrow to follow up on what's still needs to be done. The unpermitted remodel, construction, and nuisance, so there's a roof on the older roof. They've actually done work on the roof, right now, we just haven't, they never pulled a permit properly, so we're continuing the follow-up on that, that's not closed yet. I did talk, because that house is under, it's Babadis for stamp, it's a type of company that is inquired, and I have talked to them to give them an update of where we stand. We have a short-term remodel hearing that took place in early February, that was given an, you know, fine, like we typically do with short-term remodels. And the hearing, which was just recently, on March second, for another overgrowth and invasive species, so that was, that was issued an order, and we have a fine that will be starting right now. We've been told that it will be contracted and cleared up.
Counsel, any questions or comments?
Yeah. Kyle, there was a hearing back in, I believe, September, when I got over, back in the eighth street. That's not, never been my view in the code enforcement. I mean, there was a fine assessment of a hundred fifty dollars a day, I believe you filed for an appeal. I don't see anything in Circuit Court file, I think it was an email sent to Matty, that he was filing an appeal. But why is it in the code enforcement?
I can explain that procedure. The procedure, you're correct, that there were code enforcement proceedings in September that had been issued by the magistrate. The magistrate's decision was not directly appealed, which is why you do not see anything in the Circuit Court. The decision of the magistrate at the time was that the responding party had to submit a permit application, a, I believe, a preliminary permit application was received and rejected. A second attempt was made, and in response to that second attempt, your senior manager found it was insufficient and not, did not form sufficient basis for the relief, if you will, requested in the form of a permit. That is the decision that was appealed, not the magistrate's decision. In the course of, after informally declaring a desire to appeal that decision, the party retained legal representation, who is certainly well-versed in the matter. I've had a few conversations with their counsel, and we are navigating the legal boundaries around that process, and whether or not a permit is a possibility in that context, understanding the limited preemptions provided by federal law and otherwise. So that process is being navigated with the city on the best footing where there to be for legal challenge, to ensure that all administrative avenues have been addressed sufficiently, and that's where the process stands at this moment. But to your narrower question as to why there's nothing within the Circuit Court, they did not, the responding party did not appeal the magistrate's decision.
So the magistrate's decision is in effect?
The magistrate's decision was that a permit application needed to be submitted, and the parties are working to resolve that submission.
Yes, sir. Okay, but there was a hundred fifty dollar fine each day?
And the magistrate found that the party had applied by making a submission later in the fall.
But I was told that the permit he submitted was insufficient.
Which was an administrative decision, but whether or not the magistrate found it sufficient for the purposes of fulfilling the magistrate's requirement is sort of a separate and distinct analysis.
All right, because, let's start from the ground up. Before we put the tower up, we had a tour path, which violated our setback. So why are we not, why are we catering to a hazardous condition here? We're now, I guess this tower's been up at least, at least nine months, and we're approaching another hurricane season. He has done nothing to remove that tower. I get emails, phone calls, addresses every day I look down that street from the neighbors surrounding that house. How much longer are we going to give this guy another bite of the apple before we do something?
Thank you for your question. I would say, your question is, phrase presumes a few things, but what I would say to answer your question is, as to why are we still engaging in this process, I would say, because the law mandates dictates that we should. And my job is to mitigate the city's risks in their totality, not just from the perceived risks of the neighborhood property, but also the litigation exposure or legal requirements as set forth by P R B one and the other applicable legal provisions. So we're navigating process, as I know you attended that code enforcement proceeding. My, my argument to magistrate on behalf of the city was that the property owner was suggesting that permitting process was futile, was a futility, and was some kind of charade, if you will, and there was no point in applying because he would be denied automatically. And my response to that point was, give us an application, give us an opportunity to evaluate it, and we will evaluate it on its own merits, and that's what the parties are going through. His own legal counsel has stated that permitting process submissions can be more detailed and robust, and intends to make a more robust submission for the parties, in this case, the city's consideration. So while it may be, while the timing of it may be frustrating, I would say that we are going through the process as it dictates. My also, my added understanding of that is that there's been towers, not necessarily the precise one there, over the past few decades. not necessarily the precise one there, over the past few decades and intervening periods. So this is not the first appearance of this structure and we are trying to make sure that as we deal with it, we do it appropriately.
Well, again, there was no circuit over file. And when I can find out what we just said.
Confirmed.
Okay, so the third date has elapsed six months. He missed the vote to file an appeal.
Of the magistrate's decision.
Yes, sir. Okay, so that decision didn't just say he had to refill the permit. The way I'm reading, and then he's called hook. Second of all, again, that tower is still there.
Correct.
All right, and we're not doing anything about it.
Disagree. I detail what we're doing may not be a solution to your satisfaction. But as it relates to code enforcement, I work in the direction of the executive of the city, of city manager. I advise the city manager on our legal solutions, options, and resources. And as your city attorney, I'm taking the course of action that upon advice the manager is in agreement with. I don't submit that my, that the current plan of action may satisfy every party, but it is in keeping with the requirements of Florida statutes, federal guidelines, and otherwise in resolving this matter.
Well, you say, you say, and I found this case too, Dispendive versus Marion County. And it clearly says in the report, the FCC has determined that local governments do not have to make reasonable accommodations for ham radio equipment structures for destruction or prohibited by residential subdivision of conditions and restrictions, which you restrict. Again, I'm pushing this issue.
Yes, sir. I don't think that I can answer your question. I don't think I can answer your satisfaction for making a call.
I can remain calm because I don't live in the area. Well, maybe you will fight out my street. But you have four residents that are very concerned about this. And they all support you, Dave. All right, so why are we enforcing our laws?
For the border.
What's the point?
The point is, is that you're, now you're attacking your mayor.
I'm not attacking your mayor.
Yes, you are.
No, I'm not.
I agree, more than a voter, you're attacking the one.
I defer to the presiding officer, I would say only member banker. I think I've answered your questions. I understand you're not satisfied or in agreement with those answers. I think that holding this photo goes a little further than that. And it's not specifically, while that quoted language is certainly in there, it's also couched in the other case law that's gradually governing this. You look to these federal guidelines, there's a limited field of case law on this. I've reviewed it. I'm not coming just from a place of, I don't want to get people upset. I'm looking at the case law and trying to get, I've read the dispo opinion. I've read, there's two major opinions out of the fifth D C A. There's an opinion, there's a few other opinions that all speak to the notion that a government need not simply yield to any request or any application. You can enforce your post, but that must be done on an analysis of a particular antenna issue, especially amateur ham radio, which you cannot prohibit at full stop. You have to consider whether those things can be accommodated in keeping with the aesthetic safety and other measures. And I'm saying we can't consider that until we have a proper and complete submission that allows for parties to evaluate that. I'm trying to develop a factual record that the part that the city can stand on. Whether or not you think that's a proper course of action, I understand. But I, as it relates to code enforcement, I'm working with the official in the city responsible for this.
Sir, I understand what you're saying, that there's a proper receiving. This is already, this is already there, okay? He submitted a permit and it got bounced out and there was nothing done. I'd be 100% agreement with you. But you're telling me I can go build a house, okay? Get caught building a house and then say, well, I'll submit a permit at my will.
No, sir, I would submit to you that a house is quite different from an antenna.
Well, it's still a violation.
And I completely understand your position, sir, and I'm working through all. I can't change where we are.
At the end of the day, is he going to be fined $150 for every day if he decides?
There's an outstanding fine now for $150 for roughly nine days. That fine is outstanding. Whether or not that fine is resolved through the process of me working with his legal counsel to mitigate the city's risk and analyze the situation, I can't dispositively say that, nor do I have the authority unilaterally to either impose or remove that fine. There is a fine in place, very factual stuff. How that process resolves is ongoing. I had a nearly 90 minute conversation and roughly had almost 75 minute conversation with his attorney just last week at great length where we talked about the balance of the case law, where the issues go, and generally the parties were in agreement that a permit is necessary, that the city needs to provide its requests to what data is requested. As this is not a common infrastructure, I will tell you that my firm does this, works for municipalities and nearly a dozen municipalities from Port Royal to Long Beach. And in speaking with all of my colleagues, ham radio and antenna towers are not exactly the most combination that you have community to community. We're navigating a very, very niche area of law and trying to make sure that we do so properly as good stewards of the public trust.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, I appreciate it. Mr. Ray, would you have a comment?
Yeah, well, it's actually more of an amendment. City manager, that's the dangerous structure, I think number one, fine.
Yes, it's been a code violation. Okay, so it has been listed here. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council?
I just want to add that I like the new format. Thank you for your work. I'm in the council, we've got all these together. And it's so much easier following.
Thank you, Mr. Reebler. All right, we are on to item number five, which is a presentation from the Pinellas Suncoast Fire Rescue District. Normally it's Chief Davidson, but this month we have Assistant Chief Eglie.
Good evening, it's Assistant Chief Eglie, that's right. Good evening, council members, Vice Mayor Gaddis. Chief Davidson does send his apologies anytime. Here this evening, we present to you, however, he is in Tallahassee at the Florida Association of Special Districts Annual Meeting, where he is taking some classes and learning some additional stuff about special districts so that he can provide, you know, the highest level of service that he can to our community partners, including the Beller Beach. Last month in Beller Beach, there were 17 calls for service. There were three fire alarms and 14, 13 medical calls and one other. Seventy-six percent of the time, we met our call times for ALS. And 90% of the time, these calls were responded to in even minutes or 31 seconds or less. With that being said, last Monday, we had the pleasure of February 27th of having a presentation here at the city hall, where Chief Davidson presented a proposal that we have submitted to Pinellas County Emergency Services to further improve the services that we provide to the residents of what we consider North Canadian Rocks Beach, Beller Beach, and the residents of Beller Shore. That proposal that we have provided to them, to be apply for an additional two paramedics, a ALS transport capable rescue. We still have not decided if the engine would move closer to here, to our new plant station, or we would put the rescue up here. Many of your folks here talk about the traffic issues and they have not gotten any better. So when I read to you those times that only 76%, 76% that we were making our scene times, that is unacceptable for the district. We want to make sure that, you know, we can get those numbers up into the 90th percentile. And the plan that we have come up with and we have presented will enable us to do so. If you have any questions, we did a full presentation that is public records and I'll leave some cards here. And we can give you that information to the residents of your community so they can kind of be informed. We are looking for community feedback and I believe we have some avenues that we can do that. And again, we can provide you that if I request it out, I'll leave those cards. Following that, there's a process in place. So the next step in that process is called the Data During Focus Group. That meeting is on Friday and I will be, again, presenting to the fire chiefs and some other interested parties on this committee about our request. And there's about 15 other requests throughout the county that have been performed. So we all kind of present our case. So the next step in that is if they approve or recommend that it goes forward, there'll be what's called the M SAC Committee, the Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council, which consists of some local political leaders and other interested parties. Those requests will go to that and they will vet them. And again, they'll move those forward up the chain. And hopefully within the next few months, we'll have an idea of whether this idea and proposal will come to fruition. And again, we hope that the citizens of Beller Beach would fully support that because our number one goal is to make sure that we're providing you these fire EMS services that you perform every year for us. Over the last couple of weeks, the paramedics of our district, we were able to obtain what we call an acquired structure. So if any goes down through any rocks beach, 404 Melphor, which is called Melph Tower, and two structures next to it are going to be, well, they are pretty much demolished and make room for some new condos. However, we were fortunate enough to have the party representing the owners allow us to train. So how does that benefit you? Any of these real world trainings that we have, you know, we train like we do in real life. So the paramedic got to Flowwater in this mid rise, high rise structure. We got to do some firefighter safety and survival and some rescue stuff in a building that's similar to many of that in your community. Obviously the beach side and not necessarily residential, but it still is great training for our folks. As far as the district is concerned, we've had a couple of agencies. We've added two paramedics to the district. One is a transfer from Sanlo Fire Rescue, who has approximately three years of service to Pinellas County. He will be on the truck and right away will be able to treat folks. The other one is a transfer from Hillsborough County. There's a several month process depending on when the classes can get in. That will, he will be a fully accounting player paramedic. So those folks will be starting by the end of this month and will be providing services to, again, all of the residents in our fire district. So we're welcome to have two paramedics. And it's a very difficult thing right now, hiring in fire EMS is a hot topic right now. There's not, there's a lack of qualified candidates. And we got, over the last few hires, we've obtained some stellar men in this case. We had a woman in the last one, but that will be providing the top level care that you folks have come to expect. Lastly, Kyle and I had a small hurricane expo here in this room. And we have gotten back together this year and started planning for what we hope to be a bigger and better than annual event within Beller Beach. And I had suggested that actually, since we have other community partners with the Tallamian Shores and the city of Indian Rocks Beach, that maybe we would make it a district wide event in that every area can rotate it. You folks have been gracious enough to offer up for maybe our next first annual event. So him and I will be working towards getting some speakers and providing a little bit more robust event within the community that everybody that we would like to invite, you know, whether they are in our Oakhurst area or Indian Rocks or Indian Shore. So we appreciate you folks allowing us to do that. As far as the fire district is concerned, that's all that I have for you this evening. Again, I'm going to leave some cards. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Do you have any questions?
I have one. Actually, it's more of a, can you explain what it is you're asking for for the people that did not attend the meeting? And if you can make it brief as possible, if you don't mind.
Okay, so briefly for the folks here in the community. When I started for Pinellas Suncoast 17 plus years ago, we always used to respond to a fire engine at our, well, that's the way we have, we all have a rescue. But our engine dialed to the northernmost end of our district. However, that was a disservice to you folks because of the amount of time that it takes for us to get from Indian Rocks Beach to the north end of, excuse me, Beller Beach. Finally, we went to your closest unit dispatch. So unfortunately, for you folks, I would say the majority of the time, you're getting an unit from Clearwater Beach, right at Sand Key or Station 43. Yeah, you'll get Alargo or Clearwater in it because we do want to provide the highest level of care. And the majority of the time in an EMS call, you're in what? Full service better. So what we're planning on doing is regardless of what happens, we're constructing a new fire station in hopes in northern Canadian Rocks Beach. With our projected day, we'll be able to hit the benchmarks set by the county. And we will once again be able to service the residents of Beller Beach that pay your tax money to us. So your EMS, as far as EMS goes, you only pay our fire taxes. And we do, as long as we're available, we do come to those. I just want to let you guys know that, but EMS is paid to the county. But we feel as if, since you are our residents, you do support us, you do pay our taxes. We want to make sure that our paramedics are responding down here to you folks. So what we've done is, again, every year they open up what's called an enhancement. You can put in for enhancement. And Chief Davidson has been, I feel like God sent to our fire district and he's been working hard to provide the, you know, a higher level of service than we have in the past. So we've put in for that enhancement. Again, basically it's two paramedics, but it actually turns into about seven folks because you have to have two every day, and we have three shifts, and a rescue. So speaking of that, the county is getting busier, the traffic, all of this stuff. So we just went on it the other day, it's called 3M. Basically, it's like the world's falling apart. All of the fire department units that have transport capable units are transporting their own patients to the county. This was not like that when I started. It's so busy that the fire department has to take up the slack from the sun starting and say we have going around the county. And I can tell you the closest unit of transport rescue is in Clearwater Beach, Rescue 41, which is downtown Largo. And then the other one, only other one on the beach is in Treasure Island. So adding a transport rescue to our fire district, we believe will benefit not only the folks here, but our other partners in Largo and, you know, down south where we need it to be. Again, it all comes back to being able to be, you know, as helpful as we can to everyone in the community. We're all neighbors regardless of whether you live in this town or up in Clearwater or Alargo. We want to make sure that we take care of everybody. So again, we have a lot more information that I can provide you. We have lots of data and facts and figures and stuff. And we'll be happy to evaluate that stuff out. But we would ask that you email one of us.
And the only other comment that I have, which really I'm looking for confirmation, is that this plan that you have does not include asking for any more money.
Okay, so no, this is a, this would be a completely county funded unit that we are asking for. So again, this is an EMS unit we're asking for. It's two paramedics and a transport capable rescue, all out of the existing fund that you folks already pay into. So without getting into some additional specifics, you folks paid a lot of money and you don't necessarily receive all that back. And we just want a little bit of that back to make sure that we can provide not only you folks, but the rest of the county an elevated level of service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just asked a question. Are you asking our residents to request this from the county? Are you asking our residents to challenge the county to request?
So. So we have submitted the request. However, just like you can email your state senators and say, I support this and I support that. We do have the contact information for these decision makers within the county that we'd be happy to provide to you. I have to be careful when I say that the meeting that goes publicly. But please, by all means, if you're interested, we can give you any of this information and give you a little bit more on that. So we would love, basically just to say, hey, we really support what Chief Davidson of Pinellas Suncoast Fire Rescue District is asking for. And we hope they be strongly considering.
I serve all night council, and so I will be speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, now we are on to item. All right, now we are on to item number six. So it's not uncommon for council members to, to attend one of the courses offered by the Florida League of Cities. Every once in a while, we get an overachiever. So I have two awards for the same person tonight. So the first one is a certificate of completion for the online orientation class for newly-elected officials awarded to the Honorable Belinda Livingston, Councilmember, City of Baller Beach. Congratulations. And we also have the second one, which is the certificate of completion for, we affectionately call it EVO, but it's the Institute of Elected Municipal Officials. And she completed that in St. Augustine, Florida, January 20th and 21st, 2023, presented to Belinda Livingston, Councilmember of City of Baller Beach. Congratulations. All right, we are on to agenda item number seven. This is consideration of accepting the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. It's presented by Salt Marsh, Cleveland and Gunn, Sir, by all of the council. Sir, if you would, please give us your name and let's.
Good evening, my name is Chuck Landers. I'm at Salt Marsh, Cleveland and Gunn. I want to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to once again serve as the audit firm for the city. I want to also thank Kyle for his assistance to the audit process and a special thanks to Heather and Andrew as well. In a way, the audit process could be completed without all the work that they do. You've been provided a draft presentation of the financial statements. If you took the time to read through that draft, you'd notice that there are some pages in there that say this information is not available. That's mainly in the statistical section and it's also where the GFOA certificate will go. The statistical section information, we have the assortment information from 2021 back to 2013, but we do not have the 2022 information yet. Heather has requested that, most of it is being held up by the county. So once that information is available, we can put that in the report. I point that out because the statistical section of the financial statements isn't covered by our audit opinion. So our obligation is to look at that and make sure that it materially agrees with the financial statements, the basic financial statements of the city. And then if it doesn't agree, then we have to modify our report. I can't imagine that it's, once it's there, that it's not going to agree. The city is going to have to make a decision of how long they want to wait to receive that information before finalizing the audit. There, there are a couple of options that we can discuss when that time comes. The, the GFOA submission is the, the unextended due date is at the end of the month. You can request an application for extension, which the city did do last year at our request because we had staffing issues and not able to meet the timeline for that. But this year it is really just in the GFOA's hands, waiting on them. And we do not have a timeline to understand when they will issue that certificate or if it will be issued. I don't have any reason to think it wouldn't be, but again, it's, we, we don't have any timeline there. So we have until the end of the month to really make a decision on how the city wants to proceed with that. So that it's not super urgent at the moment, but something that does need to be addressed in the next couple of weeks. So with that, what I've brought to present tonight is the anticipated opinion. I wouldn't expect it to change. So we have the anticipated opinion and the basic financial statements here. The, I'd like to take the time to just go through these in summary. It's, you know, over a hundred pages, we're not going to go through in detail, but the, the important parts I'll point out. The most important part of the financial statements that I would say is on page one, this is the opinions, the auditors' reports. You have to go through several Roman numerals before you actually get to page one, about sixty-three and an inch into it. So on page one, the second paragraph, we do cut to the chase now. There has been changes in the auditors' report passed down. So we do get to the opinions here at the beginning instead of making three through four pages of auditors' report, we need to be opinion. But you'll see that in the second paragraph on page one, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund and the respective budgetary comparison for the general fund of the city as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2022, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. So this is the first opinion that you're concerned with in your financial statements. There's going to be a few more opinions as we get to some more reports towards the back. But before we get there, I'll just point out a few of the financial statement highlights. On page 17, this is the statement of net position. This is what's most comparable to a balance sheet that you would see in a for-profit entity. There are, there is technical statements in here called balance sheet, but they don't necessarily represent what you would see in a for-profit business. So if you're in a for, if you're used to looking at for-profit entity financial statements, this is going to be the most comparable. You see that in the middle of the page, and this is as of September 30th, 2022, total assets of the city were $19,555,795. Total liabilities of the city were $2,667,000, leaving net position of $16,888,000. So of that net position, $6,450,000 of it is unrestricted and $10,438,000 is restricted. A healthy balance sheet. The next page would be the comparable income statements for a for-profit entity, but this is called the statement of activities. It starts with the expenses on the left side and then goes to the program revenues. But really, I'd like to just focus on the, the bottom numbers. Let's just get to the bottom. You see that the change in net position for the city was a net increase of just under $1 million for the year, $994,000. So that is the second up from the, or third up from the bottom line, from the bottom right corner. Again, about a million dollar increase year over year from the year before, giving a net position at the end of the year of the $16,888,000. I did mention that there are balance sheets in the statements. The very next page would be considered the balance sheet of the governmental funds. The city has two governmental funds, the general fund and the capital projects fund. I would just point that out that you, so you understand what is there. The city has two more funds that would be considered proprietary funds or business-type funds. The next page I would turn your attention to is page 23. Point this out because most people are very concerned with the budget and budget actual. And that's what this page is, is the budget actual for the general fund. The middle of the page is the final budget, the, or the middle column of the page is the final budget. The column next to the, the right is the actual and then the far right column is the difference between the two. So you can see that total revenues were budgeted at about 2.5 million. They came in at a little over $3 million for a favorable variance of just over a half million dollars. In the middle of the page, or middle part of this page, you can see that total expenditures were budgeted at just over $2 million. They came in at just under $2 million for a favorable variance of $118,000 for a total favorable, favorable variance of $625,000 on the year. When you have higher revenues and lower expenses, the, the favorable variance there. I'll point out that that line where the favorable variance of 625 is shown, it currently says deficiency of revenues over expense, or under expenses, that needs to be changed to excess of revenues under or over, excess of revenues over expenses. It was that income. Just need to revise that wording. The, I, I mentioned this, the city has two additional funds on the next page. That's the, is the statement of net position for the proprietary funds. That's the stormwater fund and the marina fund. You can see that the assets for those two funds combined were 2.1 million and the total net position is also 2.1 million rounding. There's very few liabilities in those two funds. And that's on page 24. The next page though, pointing to is page 25. This is the statement of revenues and expenses and changes in net position for the proprietary funds. It's basically the income safe and equivalent for those two funds. You see that's the charges for services in the stormwater fund, $177,000. The marina fund, $82,000 for total of $260,000 between the two proprietary funds. The total operating income for those two funds netted out to $8,800, just under $9,000 between the two. There were some transfers in. So the total change in net position for those funds was an increase of $33,000 after the $25,000 was transferred in for the general fund. The next several pages are the notes for the financial statements. There are a few that I would like to point out. Kyle, in your report, you were referencing that hazard structure and some legal correspondence that's going on with that. I would like to draw the council's attention to page 44, in the middle of the section. There is a note disclosure that currently reads, accounts receivable for the general fund includes $196,915 from a resident of the city for code violations for failure to meet construction schedule timeline ordered to, ordered by a special magistrate on May 19th, 2021. The city has no intention to forgive these fines and believes the balance will be fully collectible. Therefore, the city has not recorded an allowance as of September 30th, 2022. That is our understanding of the city's position. If that is not the case, I would ask that you do share with us to see if there should be an allowance recorded there. The reason I, by allowance, what I mean is if that's not going to be fully collectible, and this is the number as of September 30th, it's, it's grown on a daily basis, we need to consider the, the collectability, the realizability of this asset. This is a concentration. It is a material amount for the city, both in every aspect of our material calculation. So on a, on a government-wide basis for the, for the city as a whole, this is a material number and we need to.
He said that's the antenna, this is not the antenna. Well, the not, this is not the tall structure or the antenna. This is a.
No, no, sir, this is not, does not have to do with the hand rating. So anyway, I will point out that paragraph because that is something that you have never seen in your financial statements before. It's new and we want to make sure that that is correct and that is what's being conveyed to us. And so before, before this is finalized, we want to make sure that that's still the current intent. On this same page, page 44, note five, this is the changes in capital assets as a municipality. The infrastructure is a big part of what you have. And you see that this carries the beginning balance forward to the ending balance of at the end of the year. The total governmental, I'm in the middle of the page, or the middle of the table there. It started, the total governmental capital assets at the beginning of the year were 12.4 million and they ended at just over 12.4 million. So not a, not a big increase there. You can see that the, the assets continue to be depreciated. So the governmental net assets, they started the year at 10.8 million and they, after depreciation was done, they ended just under 10.5 million, that's $10,458,000. So that's the governmental activity. Then the next two table, or the next part of that table are the proprietary funds. We see that they started at a net amount of 1.7 million and after depreciation, they were 1,671,000 with no additions. As a municipality, lots of times people are concerned about the debt that the, the town is carrying or the city is carrying. On page 47, this is note nine, you'll see the schedule of the different loans that the city has outstanding, but when I say loans, I'm a debt loan or loan. And in the far right column, you see that the total governmental activities had outstanding debt at the end of the year of $1,738,000. The proprietary funds had outstanding debt of $23,000 for a total of $1,761,000 of debt at the end of the year. Now we're going to jump forward several pages, about a quarter of an inch more, to page 85. Let's get back to the opinions. Page 85 is the independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on and audit for financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. The sentence that you're looking for on this first page is the very last sentence, the last two sentences where we say, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses. However, material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified. Again, that's what you're looking for on that page. If you turn the page, there's a paragraph titled Compliance and Other Matters. The, the sentence there that you're looking for is the last one. The results of our test disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Those are the, those are the phrases that you like to see there. Turning the page to page 87, this is the management letter. It's a couple of pages long. The important sentences that I would point out here, again, the very last one on the first page, there were no findings or recommendations made on internal control and compliance issues during the preceding annual financial audit. Then turning the page to the section called Financial Conditions and Management, the last paragraph in that section, section 10 dot 5441I2, rules of the auditor general requires that we communicate any recommendations to improve financial management. In connection with our audit, we did not have any such communications. The next section, Additional Matters, last sentence in that paragraph, in connection with our audit, we did not note any such findings. And then the very last page is the independent accountants' report on compliance of section 218 dot 415, according to statute. The important sentence in this page is the third, third paragraph, in our opinion, the city of Baller Beach, Florida complied in all material respects with the aforementioned requirements for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2022. Connects through the auditor's report.
I have a question because I pointed, did tag that page that you reference with regards to that large pond.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you looking to us for some feedback? I mean, you know, make it clear that that needs to be precise.
Right. It's my, my, so, so from a financial statement reporting perspective, we're concerned is, so the asset exists, there, there's no doubt about that, the files are being incurred. Is there going to be any negotiation of that at the right now? So if there is anticipated negotiation and that all of that isn't going to be collected, we would need to take that into consideration to see if that asset value should be lowered. We call that a liability estimate.
Because it's from now to $235,000.
Yes.
You know, I would never get a collector finding at large. So I think there's probably some opportunity for that to.
And, and so that's.
Although none of us want to, I think the, the reality is.
We, we, and so therefore we are asking from the city, through city manager and council, what is the anticipated realizable value of that? And that's, we need you all to give us a number and then we have a lot of them.
Do you need the number tonight?
No, sir. But, but it is something that, that would need to be finalized before we make the decision of, is it, is the report going to be submitted by the 3/31 deadline for GFOA? Will it be extended? It is something that will have to be resolved for the audit's final, I said, no, sir, it does not have to be done tonight.
Any other questions for the council? Okay, so, Steve Major, refer, this was placed on the agenda and.
Okay, so, City Mayor Reap, this was placed on the agenda and to accept this report, it doesn't say anything about draft. So are we, should we table this? Or are you asking us to just accept the draft report now and would they expect us that we're going to, or say, finally copy it here?
Yes, I should have included draft, yes. Again, we wanted to get the sort of actually coming in and present with the audit where it is now. It still needs to go to the audit committee, which we need to form with one member from the council.
So I'm going to need a motion from a council member to modify this agenda item to, to say draft the annual comprehensive financial report. Someone, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're going to change that to draft. And then what I'm going to need now is a motion to accept this draft report.
So?
Do I have a second? Is that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Can I further propose another motion?
All right, you sure can.
So the way I understand what City Mayor said was that we need to appoint a council member to audit me, so we can present a motion to, I propose a council number to audit me so that when the time comes, we can vote for this.
Are you making a motion?
I am making a motion to elect a council member.
Would someone else like to say that in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we have to decide ourselves. And thank you for stepping up twice, Mayor Shurley.
I'm not.
Second. I can't make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to let the council, I say the Vice Mayor Asherly as the representative to the Audit Committee.
Go ahead, second. All right, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. Thank you for stepping up again. Does that satisfy all of your requirements for that?
Yes, I know we'll deal with the CAC to schedule a meeting if it's not around us and figure out a timeline. We pursue an extension if we feel we can get it renewed.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Landers before the, before the-
Thank you very much. Appreciate your attendance. Yes, sir. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Rodske, I told you 19th of August regarding the lobby. It's not a material, it's an asset of the city, it's not a material asset to the operation, to the ongoing operation of the city, correct?
So in the, in the audit, in the financial statement audit, we have to determine materiality of a dollar amount. We have to look at the different reporting. So there's the government-wide and there are the different funds. Each one has their own materiality that has to be determined. And this number does meet the materiality threshold of all of those materiality components. So is that asset going to make or break the ability of the city to continue? No, but in financial reporting, it is a material amount based on the one number shared and it is a concentration in one individual.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Landers.
Thank you.
You are coming here tonight. All right, we are on to number eight, City Attorney's Report. Mr. Mora, you have the word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I continue to work with your manager on a array of issues. Though I was not in attendance at your last work session, I'm producing the provisions to, the limited provisions to the slide we will discuss. We have a resolution tonight concerning parking charges on my office and my colleagues who worked on your part mobile contract review and other similar issues. Otherwise, continue to work through issues and remain in contact with your manager. I would say on a daily basis, but that doesn't really do it justice. It's going to do it sound today, but any issues that you folks have questions about that can be answered?
Council?
Yes. What is the next process on 105 H Street? When is period 105 C?
Is that the same topic we were discussing earlier, sir? The last, the last place where we left that, I had a discussion, a lengthy discussion on Thursday with his counsel, I committed with his legal counsel, I committed to him to meet and discuss this matter with the manager this week and provide him, at least from the city's perspective, where matters stand. We need to determine what the applicable restrictions are under code, if any, as it needs to permit it, and also what, what questions we have substantively about this particular operation, this particular town and its success in the project. There's not a hearing scheduled at the moment to answer your question.
There's nothing in the near future?
No, sir, that's not true. There's, I've already told, as I stated, I intend to speak with their attorney today. If you're asking me if there's a code enforcement hearing scheduled, there is not. If you're asking me if there's a warrant adjustment hearing scheduled, there is not. What we need to determine is what best, what procedure is most appropriate, and the procedure will be determined by the work product that comes out of our, out of our exchanges. Not everything is predetermined.
Now, you, I, you can-
My aim is by the extent to have a path forward, I've committed to get information as his counsel. The process is not as fixed and concrete as your questions seem to desire it to be.
Other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mora, thank you very much for, for your patience and we anticipate hearing something with the same as time. Right. Now we are moving on to item nine, which is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Reap, what can you do?
Thank you, Mayor. Here in Housel, we are wrapping up the 12th and 13th day Stormwater Project. The last thing we did was call up the contractor and then subcontractor to review the first segment on 13th Street, which was not producing proper quality of water into the terrain. That is complete. The contractor has requested the, the rest of the payment, the rest of the damage, and we are closing that project this week. Once I get confirmation, I'll be totally satisfied. The Gulf of our underground project, we had another progress meeting on March 1st. Duke, we keep pushing Duke to tell us, trying to get enough, you know, new material is going to be delivered and that a Duke representative did state that they do not have a date, but they will keep checking. So we, our permitting is right on to be ready as soon as the material shows. The Gulf of my spout replacement, I actually did find a cheaper solution from Mayor of the larger contractors, going back to the available anchors. They've done it in the past course in talking to the contractor, they felt confident that they would be able to locate the majority of the existing anchors from their experience. And, you know, there would be a minimum charge for me to install another anchor. I think that's the best way to move forward. And I remember in 2018 when we were getting quotes, the diver team was the more expensive route of doing the concrete blocks, but now it seems to have changed, so that's positive. The Stormwater improvement projects, we had a meeting with the Citizen Devastator Committee on February 22nd, where a presentation of the bond issue and some term sheets, plus the positives and negatives of where we stand as a city and our ability to take on debt. The CAC and we had an actual citizen resident attend the meeting as well. They were all in support and making recommendations for the chair and myself to present in March 20th, I presume, the third one in a work session, so that the plan will be in the jibber. The code enforcement analysis, analysis project, continue to move forward, continue with the change in the reporting. I am getting our community services ensure they're more involved and doing some of the day-to-day. I feel like the, making it lighter with the code enforcement process and the codes in general, given the amount of time that he's in the city, a full-time job, that you assist in producing more efficient code enforcement, so looking forward to keep going with that. I haven't heard any change on the April 14th shipping day for the playground set, so just wait until they get a closer per confirmation. The, the mortgage park parking lot, it was completed on February 16th. I'd have planned on dropping that off of, of this list as well as the, we finally closed down all the PDS for the C law replacement product. The, I'm scheduling meetings with departments this week to go over proposed budget changes. We can work on the budget and we'll turn that into the financial administrator, our financial consultant at the end of the month. Moving forward, we have, have their schedule with our financial consultant for the April meeting to present a, an overall report on where we stand as close to the last budget year and what, what changes and things we should, regulations we should report to when we start this next year budget process. And then last, the, you're probably aware that we've been getting some red tide in the area. The House Department of State of Florida provided us with a flyer notice on Friday, afternoon Friday, and we posted that, put the recommendation. At that point, there weren't very many fish on the, on the beach. On Saturday, it was reported that the fish kill had increased and there were fish on the beach. We went out there, starting this morning to, there are several of our staff to start cleaning the fish, picking up anything. I think they did a lot, besides what others, we actually have residents that caught the fish in their own bags, they didn't put those bags in, and I think all of them on their own, full trash bags. Luckily, when I went out and checked on it, Memorial Park at about 1:30 this afternoon, the tide was washing up and it significantly did decrease the amount of fish that were still laying on each other. We don't see a, a larger monthly in the water, but that all could change by tomorrow, just depending on how, you know, with more fish or, or continue to stay fortunate. The staff did work from Memorial Park down south, so if the fish numbers do not increase, we expect a fairly significant, you know, 95% cleanup by tomorrow. But we'll continue, we're committed to keep working on, pick up the fish at the fastest that we can in-house. I have been in contact with the county. They have not started the outside contractors to pick up the fish at this point, and they have not started their roll-up dumpster program that they did in the past, where we provided the actual dumpsters for collection. Just as precautionary action, we did order a roll-up dumpsters line specifically for fish, from lease management, just to have it ready. That's all.
Council?
Kyle, I gave the council's attention that there's a disabled child around 21st Street, I know about Bull, or it's County Oaks Street or Route, Route, excuse me. Can we put up a sign there for the city notifying traffic that there is a disabled child? Be wakeful. They did put those signs and I have seen them, so if they're being called by our city, we're, we're, I don't see any outfits, our, our discretion.
Okay, we brought up, yeah, for session.
There's no major occasion, maybe we'll get into the work session, just a, for a quick discussion to see if there's any other opinions, but if not, I feel like it's something that benefits our child and his group.
Would a motion be suitable for this council to put a sign there?
You're welcome to make any motion you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion to put a sign, 82 signs notifying here's a disabled child, handicapped child between 19th and 23rd Street.
Second? Second, by my favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I-
I'm sorry, clarify, are you, are you proposing on Gulf or on the actual street that the child was on?
Between 19th and 23rd, about Bull, because-
Oh, because I don't think we can place it on Gulf Boulevard, right? We can place it in the neighborhood. That's what we said.
That's, could be, but Gulf Boulevard is not our, our limit.
Yeah, that's my question. Okay. We were allowed to do it on Gulf Boulevard.
No, we can put it on our riding streets, unless I get permission from my county. I can reach out and find out if it stands.
But at, at minimum, we can put it in the neighborhood. So let's, at least do that, that does, usually that on your own, if they, if the county people just want, at least have that.
Yeah, we could, on first.
Okay. I have a question. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. Yeah, on that topic as well, can we look at maybe installing a movie mat? And then if you can coordinate with the assistant actor, not specifically, what's wrong with the handrails and price, what we can do to make accommodations? I mean, get a movie mat, basically, just hits the, it's where it enters the sand, the bridge, but it goes out, so you can actually take wheelchairs out on this mat with them seating over a clear bar, so you can check those out and then report back to the council. Would you coordinate with, to, for you?
Counselor, say, well, I will respond to that. We actually had the opportunity to have those installed for free, and whenever they came and they surveyed our access, if they want to, or maybe, maybe it was something completely there, but just want to keep, keep that in mind. We'll, we'll look into it and we'll see what we can come up with, but it may not, it may not be a, an invasion of the solution. All right, yes, sir?
Kyle, the city hall generator, I mean, I missed that. Did you bring that up?
I, I, I left it on there. I've known there's been no change since I received the last call for the used diesel generator. I don't hear anything kind of moving forward with that.
I mean, I think that's a great idea. What was the original budget line item for a new?
The original budget was, two years, we received 250,000 dollars. And then when I, when we first started looking into this, I presented to the estimate, not a lot, I think it was 260, 270, I'm going to insert, driven away, away for a two per-
So this is the fix it? That's great. Do we happen to know the specs on this particular one in regards to how long it will run on a full tank at full power?
I do have the specs, so I can present that.
Okay. That's good. And also, I know we discussed previously the lining of the two flights on the 12th and 13th Street project. What's, what's the status on that?
The status on that is I'm going to build it into the next Stormwater bid that we do to get the most people to the question.
So that would be the one where we're going to go ahead and define, see if we're approved. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, can we move right on to City Clerk's Report?
I'll report this one.
No report?
I have a brief question. Patty, I don't have the handouts for tonight?
Pardon?
I don't have the handouts, they're on the table. All the city council members received handouts, I did not receive handouts.
Actually, there is a copy here.
Okay, thank you.
I stole mine. No problem, no, appreciate that, thanks.
Any questions for Ms. Tendrick? All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we're up to item number 11. This is a public hearing. This is a consideration of ordinance 23 dash 01. Mr. Mora, would you please read the ordinance?
After, after Mr. Mayor, the chief's coming along, let's get that up. This is a second reading of the ordinance as, as stated earlier within the hearing, the second hearing, we don't- second hearing, we are, it is the final hearing for purposes of the legislative body. This is ordinance twenty-three dash zero one in Orleans City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, pending section ninety-four dash two twenty pertaining to the table of designated living areas and housing sub-packs, providing for separability and providing current effective date. This is a second and final reading of ordinance twenty-three dash zero one.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's go to the other speakers for comments.
Evening, Councilman Mayor. My name is Mark Pope and the resident of five-two-three Bella Isle Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Zabel, for the detailed notes from the last council meeting. We were unable to attend the reading by title only of this ordinance. My comments are gonna cut across a couple of points quickly. First of all, after detailed analysis of the table, I could not understand the kind of arbitrary nature of the setbacks by lot difference. And secondly, I did not see any commentary that we had done any benchmarking of similar setbacks of other beach towns as well as in alignment with the setbacks recommended at the county level. As a personal note, our lot, I measured today based on the table, and my house already is over the limits. My house was built nineteen seventy-four, there's been no material changes, and I would just like to present to council that maybe we take a pause on this ordinance, have a more detailed study, understand how these setbacks are actually calculated, and again, benchmarking and or subordinate deference to the county standard.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. We're going to be discussing this right after citizens' comments, and maybe you'll understand where we're going with this. Anyone else like to make a comment?
Director Pope, five-two-three Bella Isle. I just wanted to add on to his comments around the setbacks. The purpose of setbacks is essentially to reserve our views between our neighbors, and as we're looking at this, I'm just looking at it from a fairness perspective, because there are some that are seven and a half foot, some are ten foot, we actually are the ten foot, and so arguably, we should be happier than the seven and a half foot, because we have twenty feet between our neighbors, but our lots are quite big. And so there was an opportunity where we said we wanted to add protocol something that prevents us from adding anything to our lot if we want to do any kind of improvements, when we don't need twenty feet in between ours and our neighborhood, our our lot and our neighbor's lot to reserve our view, which is really the purpose of having setbacks between your neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Any other comments from the citizens? Nope. Okay, before we go any further, I'm going to need a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash zero one. Do I have a motion?
Several.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Lloyd Roberts, Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, I'm, the way I'm looking at this, I think we're just cleaning up some language, not necessarily changing anything, and I may be a little bit off base, but I'm curious to know why this this is an impact.
Thank you very much for the question the manager asked, should the question, I'll address it. The setback amounts in each of the areas identified in the table remain the same. We are not actually altering any of the setback proposals by this ordinance. What we are trying to resolve is confusion caused by the previous layout of the table and the script errors concerning the spelling of Bellevue Estates were spelled with a B U B versus a B I D W. The format of the ordinance sets forth that in the form of the strikers and underlines, given how much content is in that table, it's actually called out in red text additional, which we don't typically do, but what we've done here is fix the spelling and and fix the formatting to make it more clear so that the way it was reading previously, Bellevue Estates had different setbacks for lots, certain lot numbers, which is still the case, and then further down within the table, it said Bellevue Estates Island had something else. And then there was another row at the very bottom of the table that was not consistent with those, and that was leading to inconsistent results in engineering analysis and staff analysis of applications. In some cases, those inconsistent results resulted in variances or other administrative solutions to to bring property into compliance as to individual properties that were constructed before these provisions, those non-performing structures, those dating back to the sixties and seventies, that's a completely different analysis. We are not proposing new setbacks be imposed or the demolition of any existing structures. This was really to clean them, it's able to avoid any further confusion in future applications, and that's what we have a warning on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other comments or questions? Sort of clarify, this is just language change?
It's what is commonly described in many ordinances as housekeeping. It is an attempt to to clarify the existing content of the code, not to impose new restrictions.
Is that going to impact as the citizens go it up and down? We're a lot lot setbacks, it's not going to approach that.
As it relates to somebody's structure that has been in place since the seventies, no it does not have an impact, however, comma, if they are applying for some kind of new structure on their property, those setbacks as established would certainly apply. So this does affect residents intending to approach new development, and the intended impact most directly is that they have a clearer understanding and expectation of what they should develop. There was one instance in particular where a property owner sought development approval, staff looked at it and reached a conclusion as to one setback, the engineer looked at it, reached another, approved something, and that approved item was not consistent, was consistent with one part of the table but not the other. And so to avoid that kind of confusion, this this was, again, as raised the last time, somebody said, which one of you suggested this was a good catch within the code and where did it come from, and that came from your city manager, in the course of ministering applications and saying, we can't have this kind of confusion. Do you prioritize it?
And again, nice catch on that, see if they can agree with her. If there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to ask Patty to hold the role. Patty.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Moody Stone.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilwoman Zabel.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye. So passage unanimously, ordinance twenty-three dash zero one. Thank you for your word on this issue. Right now, we are on to the consent agenda, items twelve and thirteen. This is for approval of the February sixth, twenty twenty-three, City Council meeting minutes and a proclamation proclaiming the month of March twenty twenty-three as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve, is it? Motion made by Frank Baker, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda passes. All right, now we are to the regular agenda, item number fourteen, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one, parking rates at city parks, city parking lots. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one, resolution of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, many parking based each hour degrees, Bayside Park, the community center, City Hall, City Marina, Morgan Drive Park, and establishing effective date. This is the first and only reading of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one by title only. This resolution, as it's been before you, is is work product resulting from your work session held late last month, just a couple weeks ago, and this memorializes the terms of those the lot towers, parking fees of fifty-five dollars per hour on weekdays in the respective lots, and then ten dollars per hour on weekends and holidays, and the intended maximum limits and free parking times. I will note during your work session that was, as I understand, in some discussion concerning corresponding parking fines, you already have language in your code in section fifty-eight dash thirty-seven and fifty-eight dash thirty-eight concerning fines, civil penalties. A resolution cannot supersede an ordinance, so we cannot do it that way if we are to change those. We will do so via ordinance, so that's why what you have here is just the parking rates, not any penal element to it as to what happens if you're if you're not even compliant. And I've spoken with the manager, were we to do that, what would be known by ordinance, one of the things that we're considering in the form of staffing, should that come before you, is at least an informal rate study, increase of other communities as to where they are, so we can make sure we're in line with that, and with any due consideration of applicable statutes or restrictions on those things.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we begin the discussion on this, let's go to the citizens for comments. Would anyone like to speak on this? Yes, or please come up.
Very, very wonderful, eighteen twelfth Street. As far as parking in this lot, is this a consideration in the render? Is this lot included in that?
Yes.
I have a problem with on the weekends, people park here, they go over to the twelfth Street Beach Access, they put theirs umbrellas, and by the time we get out there, running out there at nine o'clock, there's no place for us to go. It's been taken over by people who are trespassing. So I'm looking for maybe this parking lot should be closed off to any type of outside parking. You're including us from having enjoying and aware of the beach and making purposes of level being accounted for.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Any other comments from the citizens? Yes.
Thank you, Mom, one-one-five Causeway. I I would agree with Barry Gray with his comments. I I think we have to have parking here, though, I believe, for beach conversion, is that correct? So perhaps we can, at least on the weekends, make it more expensive so that we deter people from two different things. They come here, they'll park, they'll take their umbrellas and things, and they put them up there, and then they will go park across the bridge. One person will then come back, or they just leave them there the whole day. And as Barry said, if we're not down there by ten o'clock, you aren't getting an umbrella on the weekend.
Thank you. Any other comments from the citizens? No? Now we are to the council. Before we get started on this conversation, I'm going to need a motion to approve this resolution. So. Second. You made a motion? Why did I give it okay? November and then Friday. Mr. Zabel, you have the floor.
Uh, just, yeah, absolutely, rest of your comments, it's to be four dollars and five dollars. We moved it for, excuse me, five dollars during the weekday to ten dollars, so basically more than double it to basically try and find the pain threshold. If you have parking to decal, you're good, these are for the outside people, and also I want to clear something up, we're right here for everybody, we're not stopping on street parking, we always have that, just called, you know, City Hall Preparation. But again, we more than double to ten dollars an hour, so that's, I I don't know, we talked about that, it's more than area parking service. Lloyd Roberts?
I just want to clarify, so this is Mom, you were saying that we even visioning, now let's say we made it a hundred dollars now, so people wouldn't park there. You're saying they would typically drive here, drop off the crew, then go back across the bridge, so, okay, so you're saying that even if we even if we made it uncomfortable, they're typically gonna find another way to do that, like dropping off the crew, putting umbrellas out, going back across the bridge, getting somebody a bicycle or getting a taxi or one of those other companies, bringing that over, and they're still gonna steal the spots from the beach, so, okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's really nothing we can do about it, because we we gave up our rights as a pride of the beach to this beach person.
I disagree with that statement. I don't think that we shouldn't be incentivizing people to park in our lots and use our accesses, and by keeping our our parking fees are considerably less than the beach at Clearwater Beach. By doing that, we are incentivizing people to park here instead of there. So if we make it whatever the pain threshold is, it will at least deter them. I realize we probably can't stop everybody, but I think we can reduce the problem to some extent.
Thank you, Ms. Mom.
Can I just add, I think that's what we're trying to do, is kind of deter people from coming to the beach, because we have the same issue at Morgan Park, where we just can't get their parking spot, you know, that's where we have facilities, if you want to go to the park with grandchildren, where you have a restroom facility, they can use, you can't get a parking spot there, and we don't have any reserved residential spaces. It's the same problem up and down the beach, so we're trying to raise these rates high enough to deter people from, I mean, I think it's too long, too, we're putting some time limits on it, but I notice on this proposal, as as we talk about that, do we need to have the limits on Bayside Park and City Hall?
I was going to make that suggestion, because we originally did, we didn't, we weren't really aware that it was a problem, more than ten bucks an hour all day long. I I really, I'd envision being here all day long, but for a hundred bucks, it may be worth it, someone might be here for ten hours. What does the council, what is the council thinking on putting limits on it, just like we've had with the way that Morgan Park?
Why do you agree with that?
I think it should have a limit on it, because then it's gonna deter people from putting their tents and coolers and staying on that, which seems to be a big issue.
I would say, yes, sir, Mr. Gray.
You're gonna get there. I think the solution is, like, no, sure, as I get here, ordinance, that they have, they can ask these people who are setting up behind their houses, whether they're in the below what, sand or whatever, if they're residents, and if they're not, they can actually leave. Now, if these people from who knows where they come from, set up in our lot, are we able, if we call the police, and have them prove that they're residents here?
I don't believe that's the case, because we have public access, and it's not that the public access in our areas is not, all right, you're talking about twelfth.
Twelfth.
Maybe you didn't six Street, twelfth Street, I think once they get onto the beach, there's not really anything we can do about it.
What if they're sitting in the in the area that has now been designated our area to to set up and have umbrellas? What if they're now sitting in what has been designated?
I'm gonna need a rote right now, I don't think that we're prepared to answer those questions. I think it's gonna require some more research, and maybe we will will have this discussion in the work session, and see if we can get more information from our city attorney, and it's just not a topic we're prepared to discuss at this moment. Right now, we're we're trying to focus on parking rates and securing a new metering system for the parking. So I very much appreciate your comments, and I would like to move on. So we're back to the to the limit, the time limit on the on the parking rates. I'm gonna need a motion if someone wants to produce this.
Motion.
Motion made by Frank Baker, do I have a second?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what is the nature of the motion?
The motion is to amend the resolution, I'm sorry, I should have asked.
In what fashion?
Two hours.
As to Bayside Park and this City Hall?
I think that that would be, yeah, possible.
And I don't mean to be rude, I understood that's where you were going, I just want to clear it correct, and that's the motion.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Jody Shirley, Mr. Baker, do you have it for us?
I think this helps. I don't think it cures it. I mean, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, about the work session with just other problems. The electric planks are a big thing now at Twelfth and Sixth Street. We make our residents pay for the city tab. These electric planks is the one that says, take up parking benches and everything like that. It's a matter to be discussed more for the next phase. I think it's three hours, but that will help.
I agree. And also, this will definitely be a good trial for their pain threshold as, as the citizen said, and also as Mike said, LaRotta, if it continues to be a problem and we're just completely overwhelmed with people that have no problem paying thirty dollars and then moving on, we may raise it even higher. So we'll just see where that goes. Any other comments on changing the limits, the hour limits, parking at Bayside and City Hall?
So then we discussed this at the workshop. So if I'm, if I'm parked and my three hours are up, does anything include me from coming back and paying the additional three hours?
Well, you wouldn't come back because there's no physical machine. You would just open your act, but we've, with this resolution, we will be blocking the ability of them to renew their three hours. So three hours and then you'll chomp in on the time to move it up forward. You're locked.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Well, the current system would not have anything to do with that. They just come back and put more money in, correct? Do you think they're going?
But can they do their part to a different parking spot and?
Nope.
And take the license plate?
Just your driving.
Okay, so any other comments on the time limit motion before we continue forward?
Okay, so my, my motion's still on there to vote for.
It doesn't. Yeah. So all in favor of amending Resolution 2023-01?
Aye.
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 Any of those? All right, so you're making those changes, and now we're back to, we don't need any motion to, for the amended.
There was already a motion on the floor to adopt the ordinance. You've now moved and approved to amend, so you revert back to the motion to approve the ordinance. Do you understand that you approved that amendment?
Okay, perfect. Okay, any other discussion on approving this resolution as amended? So we're going to need a, I think you're a total.
Councilman Rebanker?
Yes.
Councilman Relivestone?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Aye.
Councilman Zabel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So the resolution passes unanimously, and we have new parking rates. Now we are on to item number fifteen. This is to authorize city manager to execute a PIB agreement with Park Mobile LLC. This is placed on the agenda by city manager. Take it away, sir.
This, this again, is a follow-up of our discussion we had in the work session a couple weeks ago. This, I, in Kyle, at Park Mobile, they were able to provide the PIB agreement from St. Peter's there. I worked diligently with Attorney Morris, colleague, just your, I should tell. And we, we revised the contract to, to the attorney's liking. They were agreeable and all of the amendments that we did, so we're comfortable with reviewing the contract, make sure that you can use prices for the city's needs. As of all background, we've had, I couldn't find the exact date of how long we've, we've actually called them back. I mean, I know it's over thirteen years. We, our financial system, we were operating at a quick rate, it only went back that far without searching through some of our records. So we have, we own all meters, we have four meters. We own, we have them in, we purchased them in order of Bayside Park, Marina, Morgan, and City Hall was most recent. I know that went in in 2018 because I hope it's stolen. So the manual parking meters, you know, throughout my experience with them, they, they require fewer maintenance and staff time. They just do not, they'll probably do better in some environments that aren't so close to saltwater air, but we constantly are spending time replacing parts and troubleshooting that. So this was presented in the work session. This is a recap, and we did an analysis of the revenue and expenditures showing it leaves that we break even and if not profit more. We're quite certain that the profit will, the margin will increase now that we've approved increasing the parking rates. And then, yeah, I just wanted to include, if this is approved, I will pursue selling the existing assets, a bunch of our parking meters back to the vendor to recruit some prospects.
Thank you. Before we bring it back to the council, let's go to the citizens for comments. If anyone would like to make a comment, training in Park Mobile, replacing our, our existing parking meters. All right, back to the council. We're going to need a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Park Mobile. Do I have a motion? Second.
I did. I am looking at, I'm not the only one.
It's, it's, it's all right. And the second was made by Frank Baker. Mr. Zabel, you have it for us?
Okay, going back, Park Mobile, we had all voted unanimously, just like Kyle's per se manager, and what he didn't know is that he was spending a lot of the time giving the maintenance on these machines, including running it out, finding parts, trying to get repaired. And we all said, we want to give him all the tools available to make him successful. And one of those was removing excess work. That's what we're doing with this Park Mobile plan. He just alluded to, yeah, we did the spreadsheet. We're looking for at least a small profit, but that was based on four dollars an hour. Coupled with that same as stood with four dollars, and they were talking the increases to five during the weekday and ten during the weekends, look forward to a pretty solid profit off the school. So again, thank you, Cal, for your, we're going to get all the members and your diligence on this matter.
Any other comments from the council on this? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I think this decision with Park Mobile is a great decision, but I don't want to confuse people by the fact that Mr. Zabel just talked about increasing the prices. Clearly, we could have done the same thing with the existing systems, so the problem would have been there as well. But the Park Mobile decision is a good decision. There's so many people to think that, well, wow, because we got the Park Mobile, we can increase the prices and we could do that before. Good.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, the key of Park Mobile was, yeah, you can increase both, but under this system, you can stop, like we just said, the max dollars, you can't do that with the metering system.
Yeah, this is a fair point, of course.
Yeah.
No, I, so thank you.
Well, we actually did have maximum, but you, it's maximum, you could beep the meter and you had to go back.
It was hard, I have paper.
And it just so happened to work out that was faster. It wasn't always any convenience.
That was birthday cake, huh?
Any other comments before we take this to the vote?
No. All right, Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Rebanker?
Yes.
Councilman Relivestone?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Aye.
Councilman Zabel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. So again, passes unanimously. Mr. Gray, you are authorized to proceed, engaged with Park Mobile LLC.
Ma'am, before we proceed through the agenda, I may ask your indulgence on a procedural matter. Respectfully requesting that we reopen the hearing on Resolution 2023-01 on parking fees. As I review it, I notice that while it states in the title that it provides an effective date, I believe somewhere in the draft and transmission that that language fell off. And I would just like to indulge the commission, the council rather, to amend the resolution further to state the resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, so that there's no misunderstanding as to that fact.
So move.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to place the effective dates on the amended resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mike Zabel, seconded by Frank Baker. All ready?
Ma'am, before we do that, since, yeah, since we have to take public comment, it's an official act, and just specify, clarify, members able to hear suggesting that Resolution 2023-01 has adopted the further amended tag language stating that it would take effect immediately upon adoption, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Mayor, would you just take any public comment before we pass on?
Citizens? Back to the council, any comments for the council? I think we're going to do this by roll, all of them.
Councilman Rebanker?
Yes.
Councilman Relivestone?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Aye.
Councilman Zabel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. And so the amended, amended resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, councilman.
All right. We are now up to unfinished business, Congress team. Any unfinished business?
Can I just add something that I think was created as a result of this, and is creating the ordinance or modifying the fine for parking? Is that something that we can now prepare quickly, I mean, as the next, can we vote on that in the next meeting, or is that something we have prepared with our statement? On point, what we wanted, and I think it was the gentleman who was supporting your shoes, actually makes arrangements based on how it's recently passed to the neighborhood units.
In, inasmuch as there were representations about increased funds and specifically being wrong speech, I know the feedbacks would totally be accurate. He provided some insight on some figures. I think ultimately, community abandoned some of that, that fee structure as part of how the parking discussion evolved and dissipated. But that said, we can move as quickly as this body wishes to move. But one, we just could not supersede a little bit by resolution. And then, two, I want to make sure that you folks have whatever information you need necessary, whether that takes the form of staffing on first reading. I know this community likes to, to work session items, and we work session, we did have a work session on it. I've had some discussions with the managers since that work session, ultimately, also prior to his direction and staff on timeline, which is the product of one staff on this. I already had a discussion with my staff about collecting the local rates that are agreed to charging up, or that, yeah, they would feel like we moved that down for the work sessions. Everything I had that discussion and moving forward.
Great. Any other unfinished business? Okay, well, it's now time for council comments. I went to the computer, opened up a randomizer program, and this one, it picked Councilmember Zabel as the stars.
Hello, randomizer. Hey, I want to call out Councilman Roberts. The invitation going well, so thank you for your recommendation and care to it now.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Councilmember Roberts.
First, I want to thank everybody who stayed this late and earlier made comments about the, the traffic issues that we have up there. I know there's one thing that we can all agree on, I hope, which is the current scenario that's going on up there is not perfect. We all know that. We live through it every day. I asked the city council on one of our workshops, because this is kind of in my swing plane as a civil engineer, professional engineer, if I could pursue taking a look at what's going on up there today, meet with the county, and talk through some different options. So we did that. I did that. I met with the director of transportation with the county, and I showed him Tom Washburn. One of the things that he recommended that we're going to do, and Kyle is just working on it, is the study that was done a few years ago that resulted in the infamous double LTM turn lane. It's up for kind of a renewed. They typically wait a couple of years, go back, review it again, hire another outside consultant, doesn't cost us any money at all. And their objective is to see how well is that current system working based on the original study. So they're going to do that. We talked about many things. There's many, many options available out there. I can assure you the following, typically county transportation departments will do this, I'll make sure they do this, that before any decisions are made, they will come up here, you know, like an open house, sometimes multiple open houses, because they'll have the first one say after the study, after receiving input from the citizens. And trust me, when I talked about some of the options, it was because citizens called and talked to me about what's going on up here. So those type of open house will take place where the citizens have an opportunity to pop me up right in here, they'll have big white boards up and things like that to show you graphically what some of the options are, where you will have input to say, hey, I like that, or I think that's terrible, and here's why. And then they'll talk to it, and they'll typically come back with another one with updated data and information, unless the first one, everybody said that's perfect, which is not. So that's, so that's where we are. That's where we are today. I feel, I feel bad that some of our citizens, like you guys, got rolled up into this because of some emails that went out by a council member that kind of gave opinions and summaries. It would have been better for that not to happen. Now, if a council member says, hey, we're talking about these things, and if you want to refer to some of the videos out there, the tapes, I recommend you look at Minute Eleven or something like that, it may be interesting to you, that's fine. But when we're saying things out there that may or may not be completely accurate or completely finished with regards to what's going on, that causes problems, and it causes citizens to get excited about things that they don't have to. Because nothing's going to happen, I assure you, until we've studied this thing and have come out with better ideas. I know, for example, that's the comments made about everybody loves the blinking yellow light, and so I, most citizens in the city, you can't have that with two LTM turn lanes. Cannot happen. It's against traffic rules. The only way we can get that, the blinking yellow turn light, is to have a single turn lane. So that's just one fact that's out there. So there's multiple ways to take a look at this, and, and we will do that, and that's what I'm doing now. I've studied every day, every day of when I drive through there, right? Coming from St. Pete and heading north, it's interesting to me, the last couple of times I've had to, I was the first car to stop at the traffic light. So I'd look to watch, and it's typically about five o'clock, five thirty, watch the vehicles coming to the sound, both of them turning to the left. Nobody follows the white dashed line. Everybody's cutting this way. My biggest concern is, it's not even the potential traffic crash problem with the vehicles. I'm thinking more of if somebody is on the right-hand side, or making a left-hand turn, somebody on the inside bumps them, and God forbid, there's somebody walking on that sidewalk with a child or by themselves, and that vehicle jumps the curb, that's what I'm most concerned about. So I, I know there's a better solution out there, they're passing it, and that's what I'm working towards. But again, you have my assurance, we're not, we're not going to make this blindly, I don't know how, the current scenario was approved previously. You know, I asked the county, I said, well, how did you guys do this before? I think he told me, well, he met with the city manager and the mayor, they discussed it, and the decision was made. So we're going to do better than that this time. We're going to make sure the citizens are involved, they see pictures, they know what's going to happen, and they have an opportunity to tell us, whether or not that meets your desires. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Now we move on to council member Livingstone.
Thank you, Councilman Roberts, for that explanation. You did a very good summary.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for your comments, we do those very seriously. Um, I want to thank Councilman Ravankar for living forward with the, um, request for the disabled child. Thank you very much for that, so.
Thank you. And now we're up to council member Baker.
For the record, I was not attacking the mayor, actually, I noted the impact the residents support. And I really haven't been attacked. Before, I noted the tower fracture, and it is a tower, it's not intact. We discussed the main toilet water, under open homes. Both can be messy, but this is a nine-month problem that kills them. And that's why I was passionate for that thing. There was no attack on you, you've got nothing but the challenge to this, as I said, you gave the office, hopefully everything will stay up here. Um, I want to really, she left, but I, I really wanted to thank the parks for record. Uh, last month, we had a pet supply drop off through Nellis County, um, loaded up my backline pickup truck, and, uh, we were so grateful for all the stuff, live with these fine residents. Hopefully, we'll have another one, but it, it was very, very touching, all the stuff you've done. Now, I don't want to be the cockroach on the Christmas turkey here, but anything that we do to offset this traffic problem for tourists is only gonna make it worse. Okay, you have tourists coming to clear order, and they see an easy way now out of, uh, Ballard Beach, we're gonna get more tourists through the magic. This is a, this is about a sixty-day problem faced every year. Come, Mary, we want to talk about this until next March, or next February. Leave it alone. I think, I think, just leave it alone. That island is beautiful, uh, that crosswalk is very necessary. I tried crossing it, that causeway, number of times, I have the council over there, where that's the issue, she knows it's a hazard, uh, causeway, crosswalk, I think we just should leave it alone. That's what I said.
Thank you. All right, now we are up to Mayor Shirley.
Thank you. So I attended the, um, mayor's luncheon this past week, and the league of ci, the board of the cities did a legislative update as they entered to, um, that season, and it was, they, they went through a number of bills that are, um, being discussed right now, and, and several things to kind of watch for, and one, once again, is the SB seven fourteen, is short-term power, which is, um, actually being supported by the city layer. So just kind of some things that, you know, maybe these bills just some for residents and other council members to take a look at. There was one they talked about, which really affects, um, every community in, in the state, and it's HB six seventeen, uh, excuse me, six seventy-one and SB six eighty-two, and it's, the, the league is recommending opposing, but it's regarding building permits and requiring that building permits, um, be approved in a very short amount of time, really, and, and if the city can't get it done, then there's, there are consequences. So just some things to look at there. Um, also some things, the land development code, and then I guess just what council members, this is important, that the, the league is now offering Monday mornings, nine AM, a call-in, um, who's called, get a live update on what's happening, really probably a good thing for all of us to take a look at. And then this is something I would like for maybe Patty could have available to residents, and it's, um, you can scan it, but it's, the league of cities has put together, formerly this has put together, um, citizens' voice information. So you can go on here, take a look at, they've got a little code to scan, um, give you updates and information on what we can do to keep, uh, governmental decisions in a local level, to give the, the cities more autonomy to make their own decisions rather than state level. And, uh, there is a big push to take city rights away from cities and put them up at a state level. So, uh, maybe Patty could give these, I'll leave these with you, Patty, and then, you know, anyone wants to stand now. That's, um, I think, oh, I guess I just have more, um, couple other comments is, um, bike racks. I know there was a question about whether we can have bike racks, I know we talked about this before, getting more, then park benches at the beach accesses. I don't know if the bike racks, I mean, I know it sounds like a great idea, maybe if we put them out towards the gates or something and not down where the, uh, park benches are, because this, this just gives those same umbrella users at that beach access more access to, if you give them a place to tie their bike up, they'll bring them on carts, they'll bring whatever they need to the beach for that day, and then now they have full access. So I don't know if we're creating a problem or not, but we might want to look at bike racks and have some special about it in the next work session. I think that's it, thank you. No, no.
We made a comment on the bike racks. Uh, for some reason, I thought that we were moving the bike racks into the parking lot away from the beach entirely, but did that not happen? Remember that we were going to add more benches, and according to the gentleman that's here tonight, nothing's been done on this, I felt we had, had benches, we were just gonna relocate them.
I remember us discussing it, I never got approval from our shores, all reached out and here, um, to tell them the plan, but as far as adding the benches, there is a bike rack there.
Okay.
I, I know we talked about possible locations for under track.
Okay, if, uh, the residents aren't using, uh, and probably maybe they haven't, but I don't know if the residents are using, I know if I see people ride bikes, I'll find out where to take them to the beach.
They tied to the bench, that's the problem. So then the bench hat, we need some benches, they've got them.
Right, absolutely, yeah. I just wasn't sure if that was us or if that was others.
Right.
It's, uh, all the problems.
Are you sure? You've not contacted them yet about this, all right?
I, I have, I was, I was.
What's wrong with the, uh, that, right?
Oh, I see, plus.
Moving forward.
Okay, all right, perfect.
All right, uh, so, uh, last month, I, uh, I mentioned the beach nourishment and, uh, the problems we've been having, uh, where it looks like we're not gonna get beach nourishment, at least not through the army of old engineers and the, uh, the Fed. Uh, so, um, I've been working with, um, with mayor from North Reagan Beach, Bill Lee, and also the mayor from Indian Shores, Paxton, and what we've been doing is we've been meeting with all of the county commissioners to say, you're collecting event packs, and it's reserved for us for beach nourishment, though you're saving all this money, so I need you to start coming up with a plan B, because right now what they're doing is not, they've just been sitting on the money and, um, and, and hoping that they don't have to spend it, instead they, uh, they, they get money from the federal government. Uh, the, the truth is, I don't think it's gonna happen, but, um, anyway, I met with Dave Akers today, he's on board, uh, with, with trying to deal with ourselves rather than rely on the army for, so we're dealing with ourselves, I mean, the, uh, the county. Uh, so he's on board, I spoke with Kathleen Peters, uh, I met with her a week ago, she's on board, Janet Long, uh, she's slightly reluctant, but she is on board. Um, also today that Vice Mayor Shirley was at the mayor's council, she was studying for me, because at that time I wasn't being able to send her at Hoover, uh, to find out if, uh, what the appropriate path would be to give more state funds to sweep the pocket of the county to want to do this. Uh, so, uh, as it stands right now, we, uh, the Fed would do sixty percent, the county does twenty, the state does twenty, and what I asked Senator Hoover for was to continue mashing whatever it is we have to spend. Obviously, we're not gonna do that, but you always ask, actually get this project started. Instead of every five to seven years, we may not need nourishment, maybe every ten years. So we'll see how that goes. Um, but anyway, I, I have, uh, a couple more meetings coming up, uh, with, with various people, and, uh, we'll see if we can, uh, see if we can get them to, to get this project started. Also, uh, speaking of the tourist development, uh, the, uh, tourist development council, uh, it was, um, recommended, because I attended that meeting, that, uh, the Big C actually has a delegate that's supposedly going to that meeting and pulling back from the Big C, but not doing it. And so I believe they're going to put me in place to go and sit in on these meetings so that I can actually make sure that Sandy is actually being taken care of, uh, because normally the, uh, the county commission, they're going to move on whatever right of invasions they may, uh, towards development, uh, council, and, um, we need that list there, so. That's enough about beach, uh, beach nourishment. I don't think that I have anything else, uh, to discuss at this time, other than I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and for those that, if there's anyone still watching home, uh, on their computers at home, thank you for attending. Uh, with that being said, do I have a motion?
Oh, sure. Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, if I, I want to bring up the floor here, Lloyd, you, me, Julie, and here, we're all ayes.